We're watching a thunderstorm. It's pretty neat. I had to say one more time.
Yeah, that's why I still got mine from Ching.
Because I lived here last time I saw it.
Yeah.
Would you, this was, that one Saturday afternoon?
See Saturday afternoon that thing come right down three eighty but stayed on the north side of three eighty and we didn't get any rain. Well, we see the backside of it, yeah. It's pretty. It looked good. We saw a little light.
Anyway, yeah.
How long did it been since we had two inches of rain?
See, I got, I got two and a quarter out at my place about two months ago.
Yeah.
Y'all didn't get here, I mean, you already got anything here in town. I got, I, I was very small.
I had two tents at my house that time.
Yeah, yeah. She had two tents, the town got a sprinkle. I got two and a quarter inches.
One time last year we had like an inch and four or five tents. You know what last year before went to someone drained? It was about this time last year.
Yep.
We didn't get, we didn't get two inches.
See, when Ronnie got his two, we had like two out there on the river that built our tanks.
Yeah, that little cloud just, it just came down across there and right across me. Marvin and I got it. I don't, I'm not even real sure Travis got it. You know, he got pretty good rain, but I think we got more. But Travis and I got that. Uh, I think, I, here in town, I think Bobby, I think Bobby got about a quarter of an inch out here in your town just this way.
So Jen, is your grass first put down out there? Did you have those two, three rains out there?
Um, the pasture grass? No. Now, the, that low grass that is planted out there is doing real good.
Does your pasture grass try to turn it back yet? Did that burn out or did you grow that out? Did you burn it?
Um, actually, some of it burned and that that has burned has not even tried to come back.
I agree.
But one of those pastures didn't burn at all and what was there that was dead is still there and it's dead. I think it killed the root system.
I mean, that's like all of this grass around here. I mean, even with that, that two inch and something like that I got out there, it's still, the bare ground was still burnt. I mean, there's a little clump of grass here and there that has grew up now, but most of mine out there is still just bare ground.
I think like that's how we all were burned. I haven't ever worn since. Like the one last spring if you kind of shot it in, you know, use one of that burnt room noise, put it right back out.
Well, the thing of it is, this didn't burn out there around me. It's just, it's just, I think the roots. Anyway, uh, let's, we're running a little late there. Everybody timing it wanted to come be here. Let's call the, the special session to order for a public hearing. Uh, to hear the public comments regarding fifty year twenty thirteen public budget tax rate. There are no citizens here other than Linda. Do you have anything you want to say about it? Anything? So, we'll call it the order. If there's no one here to speak to it, uh, so we... I guess we go to item number two on that agenda.
I'm gonna adjourn then.
Okay, we have motion to adjourn since there's no, no, no public here to comment. So we have a motion in a second to adjourn in a special session for public comment. All in, all in favor?
All right.
Jen?
Oh, Kirk, I was gonna get her name on something.
All right, let's call our, our regular session back to order. Uh, we're down to item number nine, open four. Here, you have anything?
Oh, I had something I had didn't make note of it. Oh, oh, y'all go with it.
David?
No, I don't have anything.
Kirk?
I don't know.
Yeah?
I was gonna ask a question too, but I can't think of what it is right now. I'm stuck.
We're getting old.
Hey? Have you, have you, have you anything to open for? If you'd like to just discuss with the board or make a little bit of...
Thank you.
I have a, as you hook up lines and maybe y'all were, oh, you remember?
The lights out at the airport. What did they decide about those?
Okay, that, that's on my agenda. Discuss where this goes to then. I see where I got it at somewhere. Light therapy. Uh, Len Lekker came over, got hold of him, let him fall over. He found a couple of issues with the, in the control box. He fixed those, but we're still not getting lights. I talked to Kenny, told him what they had done out there and he said, well, that gives me an idea then what we need to do. See, apparently those things kind of work like the old Christmas tree lights. One goes out there all that, you know, because they got that kind of on the loop. I don't, I don't even pretend to understand how those things work. But you know, they've got that converter buried underground under each light that converts the AC to DC power. Now, why that's not done inside the big control box and just send DC power out to the lights is beyond me. But they send, it sends AC power out to each individual light under their own loop system. And then below each light is a converter buried in the ground. It converts the AC power to DC power. One of those, what I, the way the guy from Len Lekker explained to me, if one of those has a problem, then all of them should.
Everybody gets one.
But I explained what this guy, as best I could to Kenny and Kenny said, well, then I, that, that kind of gives me an idea. Uh, and, and I was gonna ask him here this morning if they had been out there and, look Kenny.
Well, you, well, you change them things out. We changed that. I didn't think it just locked the whole.
Yeah, so you got, and, and, and when I explained that to Kenny, he said, that's not the way that system works. That's the way the guy from Len Lekker explained it. But anyway, he had, he had looked this thing over, called the, whoever makes that thing, the distributor, the experts on this thing. They told us what to look for and he said he had found a, a couple of issues in the box that changed a couple of components just inside that big control box. And he's getting power out now, but not getting the lights up. He said they thought that was what the problem. He first said, is there any way that they could have cut a line while they're mowing? I said, well, I know it's all underground. I don't think there's any way they could have cut a line.
Who dug them out? They're, they're, they're good.
Yeah, about two feet, what, what Kenny talking. Well, anyway, when, when I explained to Kenny what this guy had done out there and what, what he thought, Kenny said, well, that, that gives me one of a couple of deals that could be wrong and I think we can fix that. But I haven't talked to him since then. I'm gonna ask him any more. Anyway, that's, that's where we're at. I'll find out before the day's over with what they've done and if, if they can't fix it, then I'll give a hope to somebody else up here to see what they can do.
Looks like they could put a converter there inside there.
You know, that's what seems to me. You know, we, it looked like it'd be in that control box and not individual converters under each light. That just makes no sense. Of course, it was nineteen eighty-four technology, but still, airport lighting has been around a long time. Anyway, that answer your question on that, best I, I mean, didn't really answer it, but we're working on it.
It's, yeah, I just curious.
Anything else? Here, you told it.
I'm still waiting.
You still working? All right, uh, just informed the court. Uh, we have, I have signed the order, ordered the general election be held on November sixth, twenty twelve for all county and precinct offices.
November sixth?
That's not an action that, that the court does. That's, that's an action of the county judge, but I only informed them that had been done. The governor sent ours out and we were informed we needed to do this and we had all four days to get it done. And they recommend, the secretary of state recommended that we do this by action of the commission to court. Well, we didn't have time, by the time of the deadline, to call even a special session and go through it. But I checked the statutes and along with many other judges and we even got advice from a tax legal counsel. He said, no, that's an action strictly of the county judges. That's the way I read the statute. They don't have a clue of one. Uh, secretary of state sent that, that recommendation out and then that, and since that time such a above over our list or secretary of state sent out a retraction and said, that was our mistake. My bad. Anyway, that's just the information. Uh, Stonewall County appraisal district. They have committed for the first time, to my knowledge, a, uh, their annual financial report. I didn't get one last year and I, I'm not sure if you have a copy, but I knew that. And, um, brought down, uh...
What did it for?
Huh?
You did it for?
Uh...
Roger.
Yeah, Rogers. Over Hamlin. So, they also brought me, um, a plan for the twenty twelve, twenty thirteen reappraisal. Um, for detail. You know, they've got here three years to reappraise everything. And they're gonna start, the plan there basically was described, they're gonna start here in town. And do all the reappraisals for all the parcels inside the city then. And then next year, I think they'll take like half the county and do all of the outline, money corporate part of it. Half the county next year and then the following year they'll do the other half. And they'll, this will be a rotating three-year plan.
Did they contract that out?
No, no. We'll do it with in-house personnel.
Yeah, they've thought about.
Yeah, they've thought about contracting that out and get it all done now. But I think the cost was prohibitive on that though. And that's, and, 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 and that's what, you know, I mentioned last time, we may have to look at, at amended budgets, but, uh, they decided they, they think they can do it in-house personnel. That way they won't have to amend their budget. We won't have to amend ours to accommodate it. So, that's, that's the way they're approaching us. What detail plan?
Did that appraisal demand, we put that together?
I don't know, but they're still just like calling them.
I think, I think that's just a board plate and they were gonna change names and dates and a little bit of this descriptive part of it.
What was other revenue revenue in the appraisal?
I don't know.
What?
Copies.
I was copying.
They sell appraisal loads.
How mu- how much was it? I'd like, like three books? That much for copies?
That's, that's what I thought of it.
Huh?
It's the appraisal loads. You sell a lot of new appraisal loads. People buy on CDs.
They buy it on a CD?
Yeah, they buy them on CDs, yeah.
Good guy.
All that music?
The real estate is selling a lot. I had people that were telling about the real estate loads. The whole world is for them.
So when they buy that road, that real estate road, do they get your, I own a parcel out here, do they get your name and address? So you're, y'all are the people that selling our names and addresses then?
It, it, it's the appraisal load itself, just like.
Which is public information?
They have the right.
I don't see where that goes.
Advertisers have ways of giving everybody name and address and phone number. Well, why y'all, I don't know. I've got people that are out there who are just quite old. Uh, and this is just, I have information, uh, you might want to talk about it, but you just kind of get the word out. I don't know if you've been hearing on news on that West Nile virus. Uh, Dallas, Denton, and Tarrant counties are the big, that's where most of the cases. There's about twenty other counties that have, that have, uh, some cases reported. I think the closest one to us is Wichita County.
Dickens County.
Yeah, that's right. One Dickens County. I forgot.
Maybe one Kent County, they weren't with test results now.
Right, yeah. Uh, so it's, 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 may be coming this way. But if you got people that you know, constituents, it's gonna be going like down to a Rangers baseball game or Six Flags or something. You might just mention to be sure and take precautions. Right now, there's been, uh, six hundred and forty total cases in the state and forty twenty-three fatalities.
Will they find some mosquitoes in Ambling that tested positive for virus?
I think they found some mosquitoes. I don't think they've been in the forty cases. This, uh, uh, the state of Texas is, we're leading all the rest of, it's the largest outbreak I think we would have. It's just something, may be headed this way, but... And, and the thing of it is, doesn't seem to be any respect or age. In these cases, rains all the way from up in well into the nineties to, I think the youngest one was like an infant, about two weeks old.
The rains may escalate that a little bit.
They do. So we just need to make sure everybody is aware and, and of course, they, they say that DEET is the thing to use. And that's what nearly all mosquito are calling as in.
Are they going to spray an Aspirin?
Uh, I don't think there's any plans now. I'm not, I'm not talking to anybody. I don't know if they've addressed it or not. Yeah, that's just something I ought to throw out there. Uh, I got the radio back from the dispatch center, one of the, the eight hundred megahertz radios. Whatever we reading, it didn't work. We sent it off, uh, they checked it over, the factory couldn't. And got down to the, to the offices of the distributor. They thought it had a problem too. They sent it back into the factory. The factory couldn't duplicate the problem. They've sent it back to us. Texas communication people supposed to be up here too. Put it back in, reinstall it and finish hooking up the rest of the dispatch center. I have contacted, uh, Todd, getting, getting our grant request through to get all the programming done on the rest of the radios. That's what we've been holding, holding up on doing that reprogramming. Wait till we got the dispatch center in and ready to come online. And then we'll get the folks down here and get the all the rest of the radio program. Texas Com's gonna do all of our motorola. Uh, they, their, their bid on it was, uh, had, had, I forgot, seventy-three hundred something. We've got twenty-two, just shy of twenty-two thousand dollars in our grant funds for that reprogram. Uh, talked to Cog and they said, whatever funds we don't use for that, then we can turn around and if we can find any other equipment that we need or we're short of, then we can apply for that to use it or something. I've already asked for, you know, we've got all these hand-held radios, uh, forty-something. I don't know, but ambulance personnel and sheriff personnel, they carry them in the cars, but they don't carry them on. They're too big and bulk. In that, in that request that I've sent in right now on, on the grant funds, I requested one speaker mic and one of the leather, uh, swivel cases for those. If they want to do, if you can get, you can get that one in, I'm gonna give it to the EMS director, let them try it out. If that works, and it also frees up their hand, they can have a better radio with. Right now, most of them are carrying the little, uh, Kenwoods, I think, because they're small, but they're not near as big as they were. Get one of those in, let them test if it works out and we have funds left. I've already talked to Cog to see if we could order enough of those speaker mics in the, in the carrying posters for the rest of the EMS personnel and the sheriff's department personnel that need. That way they can have, when they're out and about, they've got the radio with them. They take it count, if they can talk to just most any place, count. Yeah, that, that's what we're looking at there, but they're supposed to be here tomorrow to finish, put that radio back in and complete that thing. So we can get, then we'll start on the reprogramming and stuff like that.
No pagers?
Uh, pagers right now don't qualify under these grants. What Jimmy and I are talking about is on, on these, these other radios we pulled out, the ICOMs, we sell those and use those funds to then to buy a few more pagers. Those, those pagers are, finish, you're amazed at what those things cost.
I have a question. On our new, um, frequency?
Mm-hmm.
We put the sheriff and the hospital on the same one. Kent County, um, had a transfer last week. And they couldn't get us on the phone. All the hospital lines were tied up. And they were trying to get us on the radio, which we couldn't hear very well because it broke up a lot. Any way that we can put Kent County for that they can communicate with us on that new frequency?
Well, I, I don't know. See, Kent County's got two frequencies. Are they going digital on any of them? I've not talked to Jim about it.
I don't know. You know, but they couldn't give us any kind of a, a report or anything because they couldn't get through, on the radio or on the phone.
See, that, and, and that's the thing about digital. That I think that all of our sheriff's departments and ambulance services need to do the digital for, for many reasons, but one of them is, it increases the range and clarity of, of the signal. See, DPS has already gone to that digital. And that's what Kip was telling me. He said, we've got, they've got places that they've never been able to communicate with. Now they can talk anywhere they're at in their district now with, with the digital. It's just something about it, it narrows that, that signal and they can get a, a whole lot better clarity and a lot more range out there. And I'd like to see all of the sheriff's departments, if they've got, if they've got a separate frequency that they can operate the sheriff's department and the ambulances on. We need that because it's pretty critical communications. You know, the rest of them, like the, the fire department, when they're working, that, most generally, that's talking unit to unit. And that analog will suffice to that because they're all gonna be in basically the same area and can talk to one another. And they normally got one that's, that's powerful enough that they can reach back to the dispatch center if we need to. But the, the ambulances in our sheriff's vehicles are all gonna be anywhere. We need to try to expand their clarity and range on their radios and that's what this, the, the digital will do for them. But, uh, but no, we need to get, we need to get, I'll, I'll talk to Jim and see what their ambulances operate on. I'm, I'm sure it's, well, I, I know reasonably certain is still analog, but I don't know if they have any plans to upgrade to digital on any of their stuff.
I don't know either. I just know that they were a little frustrated because they couldn't get, you know, like contact.
And see, the, and, and the good part about these P twenty-five radios, that we're all have, that every, everything we've bought, P twenty-five, they can, they, they will program or they will receive multi-mode, otherwise they'll receive digital, hard, analog signal, either one. They'll only transmit on one, whichever one you program in, but they'll receive both, which is, you know.
Are we gonna transmit to the store or anything?
We're going digital on the sheriff's and it'll be the sheriff and the ambulance be, be digital. Uh, everything else will be, remain analog. On the old, the old frequency that we're operating on now, it will remain analog. And that's what the sheriff's department, I mean, the fire department and the county will all be on it and city.
Same just like the war.
Yeah, just like war. On that frequency, that analog, it is, we just gotta get all the radios narrowed.
Still be able to pick all them up.
Yeah.
We won't be able to pick up.
Right.
You can't even program these scanners in on that frequency, the sheriff's frequency. They'll be low bandwidth.
But do what now?
These, these scanners, will they be able to program that frequency in?
Yeah.
The sheriff's department?
Yeah. Yeah, and see, uh, Cog is already putting that out to all, and, and I'm, I will, as soon as we get ready to go online with it, I'll make sure that all of our surrounding counties, Kent, King, uh, Knox, Haskell, Jones, and Fisher. That's about the only ones we really need to, to make sure they have the new frequency. And, and the thing of it is, like I said, even if they're still analog, all of this equipment will still receive that analog system. But no, it's, it, that, that's already been put into the Cogs, the nineteen county system.
Well, I get on the fire, Kenny, but they're gonna be having to put analog.
Yeah.
Will the sheriff be using analog so he can first with them?
Well, yeah, he can, he can, all the radios will be able to receive either, either signal. They just can't transmit on one signal.
Kenny, they?
Yeah. Kenny, Kenny will be able to hear the sheriff, but the, the dispatch center will still have the, the, an analog system on where they can page out stuff and talk. See, that, that was my question. You know, we just now got to where everybody can talk to each other. And now we've got all this new equipment and they're trying to, I mean, they, they wanted everybody to switch to digital on everything. Well, a lot of the, a lot of people just didn't, were resistant and a lot of them had some other radios that won't go digital. And that's like these that we're pulling out of, out of the fire department. Those, but they were narrowband, but they will not go digital. But all of these are gonna replace those and they'll do either one, whichever one we program.
We'll put all these in fire trucks?
Yeah, well, certainly. See, we've already got, we've already got P twenty-fives in five of these, of down there. The tates that we got, you know, that, that was bought in oh-nine.
You want to leave that out for a minute?
No, it's, uh, the, the two red trucks. The, um, rescue, the van that they're gonna make rescue out of and that blazer. They, they've already got P twenty-five, the P twenty-five tapes.
Well, your military folks that still have it, they still have them.
But I've got, I've got, I can, with external.
You still gonna have sheriff's, those old radios?
Yeah, we'll, we'll have a casual radio in case one goes out and we've got a replacement or we can just switch them out right then.
You're planning on trying to sell them and get, get them some later or something?
Well, the, the, the one at the fire department, one of these ICOMs right then, and that's what Jimmy and I talked about. He said, well, we're gonna do it. I said, well, I'd like to see them, you know, because they're, they belong to the fire department so they can do that. And said, you know, if, if some of your, the guys down there want radio, figure out what they're worth and sell them to them or they can put them in their personal vehicle. And that way, so have these guys will show up in their pickup to go straight to wherever the fire is. They've got that. And then we'll take those funds then and maybe buy a few more pagers with those ones. Anyway, that's, that's, that's what I've talked to Jimmy about.
Yeah, I don't know.
But anyway, that's, that's the dispatch. Uh, we've already talked about, I had on here, Gary, we asked him about the report on that radio G that we've already discussed that. I should around hoping that one of these guys up here will sign the quit and we'll get Gary on that board. Next week, of course, the courthouse will be closing on Monday for the holiday. Uh, then on Wednesday, I'll be leaving, going soon to home to probate judges conference. But also Wednesday, Cog has sent out notice of a general session and executive session meeting at senior citizens center here. And as far as I know, no one in the county was ever notified or even surprised of that. Did you ever get a chance to talk to Linda? Did you ever get a chance to talk to Linda? They, they contacted Linda to provide the meal for us. We're gonna have the full session here. And the first I knew about it was when I got the letter notification of the meeting, like everybody else in, in the CAG. I don't think Bobby knew that, I hadn't had a chance to talk to anybody. But anyhow, David, I've already talked to David, he's gonna sit in on it for me, but I'm assuming that any of you guys that would like to sit in on that meeting. It's, it's lunch at twelve, and then the meeting starts at one o'clock. We're gonna be nominating and electing new officers, COGS, I guess, executive.
Phil.
Phil, yeah.
Go to him, position.
Yeah, he's already, you know, last year, see, same thing happened last year, the meeting was held in Haskell. The same day I had to leave for San Antonio last year, David, David went on that, and he volunteered me for every board that he could get. He should have taken care of him. And he said he'd do the same this year, he'd look out for him.
I think the girl can do anything, man.
And I, I tried to call Tom Smith, and he not really raised your complaint, but just to kind of inquire why, since they're gonna hold a meeting here in Stone Wall County, that nobody in Stone Wall County knew about it before everybody else did. You know, it's been kind of nice, probably kind of had an idea that, who hasn't noticed. First of all, I think the meeting date could have been changed if they'd have contacted me, where I could have been here. I'm already scheduled into that meeting in San Antonio.
Roll down the rig and have a martyr, martyr.
That's what I'll do. Anyway, it, that's, that's the Phil, anybody wants to attend that thing. You know, lunch and, and the business meeting. But I will be gone, leave here Wednesday, and I'll be back on Sunday.
Sunday?
Huh?
You leave back Wednesday?
Sunday. The meeting, the meeting goes till, till noon on Saturday. I'm staying the next day, my wife's gonna get to go with me this year, so we're taking an extra day and going sightseeing.
So you're gonna miss, you're gonna miss Friday's meeting too then, huh?
No, that's next, that's next week. That's next, this week, Friday, we have that, another special session called for Friday at ten o'clock. On, uh, on this, uh.
Easy, easy? I was gonna throw him on the butt.
Uh, yeah. No, but anyhow, that, that was, that was the last thing I was gonna remind everybody of, is, is we've always have the, the two, the two public hearings. The first was today, the next one is, don't forget, yesterday, ten o'clock, Friday morning. That's our second special session for public comment on, on the proposed budget and tax rate. Anybody have anything else?
Yeah, I thought about what I want to talk to you guys. Grab the water, swim pool, I didn't bother.
Uh.
What did you do that?
Well, most of it we've put out on the watered trees. Uh, the thought about, you know, seeing if, if somebody else went, but I, quite frankly, I couldn't figure out how we would choose who got it and who didn't. And so rather than have that can of worms opened up, we just elected.
Watered the trees.
We watered those trees in the park.
And last week, it nearly, he, he was parched.
Do what now?
It, it probably entered the mail.
Yeah, he, he had it down to where it was just about empty, of course, with the rain, we probably got more in there. The old sump pump had finally quit, and I told Ricky that, uh, that I'd call Lynn Electric, told him next time somebody is passing through here, stop by and pick it up. He told me that it, that it, he thought that it had lost all the oil, he said, for whatever reason, he said, that ring where the pump and the motor gun go, he says, that white milky looking stuff. I said, well, that's, that's the oil mixing with the.
Well, that's what we bought, we bought that pump, it's like two.
Not the sump pump.
When he looked down, I thought you said it was rebuilt.
Yeah, it was rebuilt.
Just rebuilt, I thought.
Yeah.
I took it over there.
Yeah, no, it was just, just rebuilt, it was Lynn Electric. But that wasn't last year, though, I think, was it?
Maybe, maybe.
Maybe, maybe year before, because I don't, I don't think we rebuilt it last year. That must have been four hours.
I can't remember if it was pre-hard tack or pre-stroke.
It was, it was pre-hard tack.
Was it pre-hard?
Yeah. Okay, that was, that was year before last, yeah, that, that, yeah, that had to be at least year before last. Because last year we didn't, we didn't. But anyway, it's, uh, it's quit again. And we, I, I don't know, we, uh, we'll get Lynn Electric located again, and it might be, might be better deal.
But with.
Buy another replacement, I don't know.
Since that you're, you got going down there, we wouldn't need, you did, you pull off that bottom.
Right. Well, and I, I said, well, we don't need it, we can, we can finish pulling off at the bottom, he said, well, I've already drained everything out. We'd never get that boot of prime again with it, just right in the bottom. But, uh, I imagine I can borrow something from the city to finish emptying it when. I mean, he, he said it is down a couple barrels of water left in it, but after the rain, we're gonna have a little more. And that's why I told him, I said, well, I'm, I'm gonna be hoping for big rains, and then we have to slump it out again. But I imagine the city's got something like a board. They're always having a pump out of ditch or something. Any help?
Mushing the dirt.
Got a motive to adjourn? Any discussions? Do we have a second?
Yeah, we'll discuss that.
Oh, oh, we got to.
Yeah, we got to.
Pardon me?
Oh, we got to go to budget workshop.
Oh, budget workshop, that's right. Uh, and, and, and the thing of it is, on that budget workshop, with the public, with the public hearing this morning, I, you know, we've got, got everything set. I don't know that we really need it, I just put it in there in case somebody wants to discuss something. I mean, I'm trying to overlook it, you're, you're jumping ahead of us.
You're gonna have to call the special meeting if you wanna do number ten now, isn't it?
We went right by it.
But anyway, I, I put it on there in case somebody has told something they needed to discuss, or in case something was brought up this morning in, in the public comments that we needed to, to talk about. I don't know if anything, our budget's set, tax rate's set. Does anybody think of any reasons, anything we need to discuss on the budget again?
Are you gonna tell us how to put these in, or what, is that class gonna be, we need it up last week?
Well, the, the changes on note, on this thing, one was a typo on, uh, the JP secretary's, uh, salary. She was showing a dollar more, so I get to throw her on the bus system. And then the other change was, uh, we, we went ahead and added that in for the DA's, uh, compensation, in case y'all approved it. She already had it done, and y'all did approve it, so that's the only changes over what you have in there.
And it's, it's, you should be able to go through your budget and just pull out those page numbers, the numbers should be right.
These pages a little shit, quite alike with the other pages. Let's go to typo.
One dollar, David, one dollar.
Okay, page nineteen is the district attorney's.
Actually, it's two typos.
Two? It was one only first started.
Yeah, but on the posted one, uh.
Nineteen has got a change on the other one, so, uh.
On mine, one of posted, I had two dozen.
Thirteen and nineteen, oh, it's late, it's got to change it.
Well, actually, you have to replace the remaining pages, because those totally change, just that one.
Well, then, if thirteen is? No, you don't, how many you want?
Two.
Thirteen, fourteen?
And fifteen.
And fifteen. You get the spread free.
Well.
I did last week.
That's right.
I got seven on it.
Page twenty-one, all the rest of them are here.
Thank you, ma'am. You're gonna miss my home, is there? What gal?
This one.
You gonna save it?
You can't even throw it away. I have to keep mine, so it's a little bit of trouble.
Okay, I see, I'm waiting, I'm, I'm keeping it all in the package, and then when we get to, she's gonna check me on the news. All adjusted. Of course, y'all will get one.
Yeah, everybody will get one.
So you'll get to change all of them when it's set up.
It's your boy, I'm thinking that coming here the day before and get all their notebooks out and switch them all out.
Write them out.
What gal? Was any, any other questions on that, on budget? That, that, that was all it was, it was just, two minor changes.
But David has said that he has not run all the numbers completely.
He still crunching, he still crunching numbers.
I had to take the rate and go to Austin. But, uh, I'll get back on that, I'll see.
Did you charge this per dam for going down there, or chauffeur's thing or anything?
You know, not a bad idea, I figured, yeah.
What person had to put up there? You're gonna get warm. Did he just?
It sounded like.
Well.
I'm telling you.
No money.
If you live Austin, leave at four o'clock in the morning, that's fair.
Yeah, I, see, I heard about that, getting up at two in the morning and starting the coffee pot, yes, sir.
And waking up.
I've had all I could stand.
Get out of there and get her home.
We're on the road at four o'clock, can you?
Which one is he putting the empties on, getting out of there or getting her home? Come on, David.
Both, really. I don't like, I, I had all of that one.
Anybody else have anything on the, on the budget, any questions about it that you run across, or, or that's? You might get it figured out there.
Just about. Trick, trick, trick that, and then do that.
No, I, I'm, I'm capable.
He's flowing.
You done messed up.
This is back page.
It was right there. Uh, then she's messed it up before then. That's the grants.
He started getting rid, now they get, they get, his camera's still rolling.
Now you've cut another page, you know, now you got to take, put my door by.
Oh, no, it's right here.
No, that other pager.
This one? No, that, that one, that one there. This is right here. This is the old one.
Where'd you go?
It was right here, I took it out.
I thought it was on the tape.
I'm still capable.
You guys, y'all are killing it.
And you, and you got it right.
Yeah.
Oh, man.
We now need to go to, well, that's all, in, in, in the action, on the budget, on ten, we're ready to go to eleven.
We're gonna, we're gonna.
I want to buy you that while we have time.
We're gonna have it.
We, we, we have a motion to second adjourn, all in favor.
All in favor.
We'll just let them have it, and then motion.
Nice, nice. Oh, ninety, ninety.
So is anybody going tomorrow to San Antonio?
I wanted to, but no, I can't.
Um, um. How's it start?
Uh, Tuesday the twenty-eighth, nine AM to three thirty.
So you're leaving early.
Five hundred Conso, Rio Conso Drive.
How much shopping you think my wife can do while I was at me, bull, she'll get her own.
I don't think I should leave her unsupervised that long.
She'd probably leave early if she go.
Are you still taping, I want this on tape while you're saying.
Okay, let me, I got him, scoot him up in that chair, I got him. State your name.